Mr. Kerr.
Present.
Mrs. Lieber.
Present.
Mrs. Lowry.
Present.
Mr. Schroth.
Here. Okay, thanks, Jared. First of all, I'd like to welcome everybody and thank you all for coming tonight. I also want to extend my gratitude for how the meeting was conducted last week, and I really, truly appreciate everybody's professionalism in their public comments. We welcome all comers. We do have some public comment. I will remind everybody that it's a three-minute limitation. Eric Blank, are you here? Okay, if you would, please.
Good evening, board members. Thank you again for being here and all the work that you do. I am here to voice, hopefully, for the majority of people, despite a very vocal minority that I feel are working against science and against established facts, that there is a vaccine, that there is a need to mask for those people that have not had a vaccine, that there is a need for people under the age of 12 who cannot receive a vaccine to continue to mask, because there are established cases of children being infected by the virus, being hospitalized and dying from the virus. This is not conjecture. This is indeed hard, solid fact. And the fact that there are those in our community that do not wish to acknowledge this is immaterial. You cannot wish away the fact that in order to preserve the life of our children in close spaces, we need to follow the guidelines of the CDC. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Eric. Aurora Blank.
Hi. So I sort of see the mask issue as like mowing your lawn. No one likes to do it. It's really tedious. It's just awful work. But you have to do it because if you don't, you're going to get fined. Let's just pretend that there isn't a fine. And without it, I'm pretty sure a lot of people, well, I would love to believe the entire community of Indiana, will all mow their lawns, cut clean grass. They probably not. A lot of people are probably going to let their grass grow really tall. And the problem with that is that there are ticks, and ticks carry Lyme disease. Now, if a person didn't want to mow their lawn and just let it grow, and they're fine with having ticks in their yard, that's great. If they don't go into their yard, perfect. If someone has had ticks on them several times and never once gotten Lyme disease, good for them. Unfortunately, that isn't just going to affect that person who doesn't mow their lawn. Everyone who walks by that lawn is going to get a tick to jump on them, and then they run the risk for Lyme disease. There's also cats and other animals that will run through that lawn and carry the ticks elsewhere. So just not good sign. And even if I were to perfectly manicure my lawn, just cut it really short, really clean, there's no guarantee, and the person next to me is growing an absolute jungle, I'm going to get a tick on me. It's just how it's going to happen. In addition to this, the argument that little kids and teenagers are not as that much of a risk for COVID-19 as the others is true, but the problem is it ignores the fact that there are a lot of kids who are actually at high risk because of physical illnesses. I, for one, am a part of a group of friends that all have a physical illness. Coincidentally, I swear, we just group together sometimes. And so we're all at high risk for COVID. And if one of us gets it, it sort of puts us all in a bad situation. And in all honesty, I'd really prefer if you mandated wearing masks so I don't have to calculate the probability of me getting COVID-19 and if I'll be able to survive, because that's a lot of math that I don't want to do.
Okay, thank you. Jake Davis.
As a parent, I feel I should have the choice if my child wears a mask to school or not, not to school board. We still have freedom of choice as Americans. Our kids have been through enough in the last 16 months. It's okay to question what is right and what is best for yourself. Unfortunately, fear has become a virtue in this country. If you're not afraid, you're just not a good person. I hear the term selfish used a lot. If you don't go along with masking your kids, you just don't care about people. This is what I fear. I fear we're raising a generation of American children to be conditioned to have no thought of their own. Do as the government says, do as the TV says, do as the school says. Don't question, just go along. But my job as a parent is to raise my kids how I see fit. I don't think the school they go to should dictate whether or not they wear a mask. I think that should be my decision. I want them to know it's okay to think for yourself. It's okay to not wear a mask. Do your own research. Don't believe everything you hear. Be analytical. Use critical thinking skills. Someone mentioned risk last week. That's what we do on a daily basis as humans, is analyze risk. Driving to work every day is a calculated risk. Choosing the food we eat and what we drink is a calculated risk. That's why when I talk to my kids about COVID, I tell them I have reservations about masking. Are the potential risks that are presented even worth it? Does it even make you safer? There's a lot of data to support that masking can have long-term negative impacts on kids, to the point that it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to mask an otherwise healthy kid. The one story that really caught my eye were the parents in Florida that sent their kids' masks off to a lab to be tested. They came back with pneumonia, tuberculosis, Legionnaires' disease, et cetera, in the masks that are supposed to protect the kids from getting respiratory illness. So are we to gather it's okay for our kids to get those illnesses but not COVID? I'm using one example of many to keep my speech brief. An incredibly small number of kids have died of COVID. According to the 2010 census, there were around 73 million people under the age of 18 in this country. Problem I run into is the CDC records COVID deaths from 0 to 5 and 5 to 18, so it's kind of leaving more people out there. But the latest data on the CDC website from July shows that there were only 412 children that have died from COVID. Let's just assume there was only 73 million kids between the ages of 0 and 18. That's a .0000006% chance that a child is going to die from COVID. Around 3,000 kids a year in America die from motor vehicle accidents, yet the vast majority of skilled children are taken to school in a vehicle every day. Are we going to wear masks every day going forward if there's a flu outbreak at the school? Is this a precedent we really want to set? Even the data itself can be somewhat tricky. In March of 2020, the CDC changed how they could record deaths. If a person was found to have COVID at all in their system, thank you for your time.
Jake, thank you. Ashley, Ashley, Ashley Klausert. Ashley, Ashley, before you come up, you did not give us your address. We need to make sure, we just need to make sure you're a resident of the school district. Thank you very much.
Good evening, board members. I come to you this evening as a very concerned parent of a child that has autism. Science and common sense has told us all along that wearing masks and changing daily life as we know it has caused severe adverse effects on all children, especially those with special needs. According to an article published by M D P I, which is a peer-reviewed journal outlet, the physiological and psychological effects are serious, including restricts breathing by increase in the resistance of air movement during both inhalation and exhalation, decreasing oxygen levels while increasing carbon monoxide levels in the blood, collecting and colonizing viruses due to the increase in temperature and humidity between the mouth and the mask, which is a perfect area to breathe. Headaches, anxiety, depression, and lower immune system, just to name a few. According to an article published in 2020 in the Journal of the American Medical Association, the COVID-19 virus has a 1,000 times smaller diameter compared to the diameter of the threads of a cloth or surgical face mask. Due to the difference in size between the COVID-19 diameter and a face mask thread diameter, COVID-19 can easily pass through any face mask. Several studies, either randomized controlled trials or meta-analysis, have proven this exact statement. After reviewing, after reviewing all studies worldwide, the CDC found, and I quote, "no reduction in viral transmission with the use of face masks." Now, let's think about that for a minute. Lastly, last week, Mr. Vukovich touched base on the severe frustration you and administration face by not having concrete guidance from the Department of Ed, Department of Health, and even the state as a whole. That frustration is real, and I sympathize with you, as I too did not have guidance from anyone on June 17, 2020, when I had to make the heart-wrenching decision to admit our son to Western Psychiatric Hospital due to the severe behaviors that were brought on by the lifestyle change that came with this pandemic. No one in this room held our hands as we took that drive and left our son in the care of others. No one in this room provided us with guidance on how to handle this newfound life of literal fear of our son and not knowing how to handle the next steps. The days and nights were both long, and anyone on his education team can tell you that it took us almost a whole year to get him to be able to go to school safe and actually learn. This poor child lost an entire year of academics, hence the decision to retain him. We, as the parents, made those decisions among various requests throughout the year to change things in his I U P to continue to help him with no one guiding us on how or what to do. It is my belief that parents know their child better than anyone, and I ask that you provide the opportunity to make masking optional as those that want to send their child to school, mask them up, they can. And those of us who don't want to add any more unnecessary physiological and psychological effects to our children can do so by sending them to school unmasked. Our kids continue to see the long-lasting effects of this pandemic, and they are the least affected. It's our child, therefore it should be our choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Ashley. Tony Schaefer.
Hello. I have three children here that attend East Pike, and I have 15 years' teaching experience in public schools in the special education field. I know that schools look to other neighboring schools for ideas and guidance when dealing with a host of different situations. As it pertains to masks currently, the following neighboring schools are mask optional for the start of the school year: United, Penn's Manor, Purchase Line, Marion Center, Homer Center, and even I U P. River Valley will vote on this issue on Wednesday. That is, all of our neighboring schools except one that have masks as an option, based off their websites. Why is Indiana the exception? There are currently no mask mandates from the state or D O H. Different levels of government and the D O H have stated that schools can make their own decisions, and I agree with that. There's a reason they're not giving you more information. The government knows how badly they have messed up, coming in and closing down our schools for so long and making mandate after mandate that we're affecting our children. If they didn't realize what a mess they created, then they wouldn't be pouring billions into our schools right now to fix it. I've seen firsthand the effects of this pandemic on our children. I've experienced more mental health issues, academic struggles, and poor attendance among my students than ever before in my career. Masks did not prevent quarantines of our students. It did not matter if they were worn or not. 15 minutes or more got you quarantined. In a time when our children are more isolated from human connections than ever before, thanks to technology, I don't want them isolated even more by covering their faces. Their voices need to be heard, their expressions need to be seen, and they need to know we see them. They need to hear us and see our expressions, too. My family and I wore masks when it was mandated to do so. Our children wore them so that they could attend school in person because we felt that was the best environment for them, and we still feel that way. We now choose not to wear them because that is our choice to make, and it should be a choice of all your families and employees in this district. We also respect anyone who chooses to wear one because it is their choice. I no longer want my children to come out of a school building with temps of 80-plus dripping in sweat and their faces flushed from being covered all day, especially my 40-pound, my 40-pound five-year-old. After a year and a half of having our voices heard and being included, parents were left out when this vote was made. No information was collected on our thoughts about masks or other options. A board member stated last week how they felt they didn't have enough information, but yet the vote still took place. Why? Maybe asking the families in this district would have given you the information you were looking for. In closing, someone at the last meeting stated that parents are not responsible for our children's safety. Medical professionals are. Well, here's my response to that offensive comment. Medical professionals are people who can make mistakes, too. No one is a better advocate for my child than me. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Richard Neff. Richard Neff.
Hello, greetings. I'm Richard Neff. I'm a physician at the hospital here. And I must say, I have no kids in the school district, and I'm here in my personal capacity, not in any official sort of capacity. And I wanted to, I spent some time this evening, early evening, listening and also thinking, you know, these are times that have caused some great strain in our communities here. One of the things that I've really grown to appreciate in Indiana is that we can come together, and I hope that we'll be able to continue to do that. This is the time I've chosen to come to live in. And second, I wanted to thank those who serve on the school board for the time and commitment that you've done to go ahead and try and figure out a way forward through this great, tremendous challenge that we have. And it's true, the Department of Health and Department of Education have left you all on alert trying to make dozens of individual decisions that does not make any sense. Does not, you have been left abandoned by the leaders of the state and the Commonwealth for this. I'm here to say that the CDC does recommend masking, physical distancing, and improved ventilation for the schools. That is the recommendation from the CDC to try and prevent not just kids from getting COVID, but probably more importantly, since most kids who get COVID are not going to be severely infected, but for those that are at risk, both in the kids in the community and also siblings, adults, older people, that is probably the greatest recommendation that they have. But I also wanted to point out that in the CDC recommendations, they go ahead and say, "Take a look at what your local incidence of disease is and think about what you can do." One of the things that you have here in the borough, in the wastewater, is you have a surveillance system that's in place checking to see how much COVID is out there. How much COVID is too much? I would say any would be best, but that comes at a huge price. You've heard some of the parents here talking about what their children, you know, have gone through. We've heard from other, Aurora, talking up very eloquently about her personal, you know, struggles and the struggles of the groups of her friends. And this is a challenging, a huge decision for you all to try and make. I don't know that it's the right decision, one way or the other. I put it out there that the CDC does talk about going ahead and looking at local incidence of disease and making decisions about what that means for your restrictions and your compliance and your ability. There are huge operational issues if you go ahead and mask all the time. I don't know what the right decision is. I support you in whatever it is that you come up to make. And it really is, it really should be. Thank you.
Richard, thank you very much. PJ Cabeta.
So this is obviously a highly political issue, an issue that people feel very strongly on. And while some believe that masks are necessary, the fact that, the fact remains that until there's a law requiring it, it really is a constitutional violation to force these children. My children, my choice. If you want to wear a helmet and shoulder pads to walk across the street, go ahead. I'm not going to, just like I'm not going to force my kids to live in fear and wear masks. I think it's pretty safe to say by the people who wear masks in their own car, driving by themselves, every decision mask-based is definitely not logical. Now, everybody's paranoid about this Delta variant. However, its case fatality rate is .02%, which means the actual fatality rate is much less considering many don't seek medical attention or have any symptoms. Now, his numbers are a little newer. Mine were 335 children that had died from COVID. So we can say 400 all agree with him. Out of 74.1 million, he told you that's a 0.0004% chance of kids. The mortality rate in kids with pre-existing conditions, or with, I'm sorry, without pre-existing conditions, according to a study that was done at Johns Hopkins where they worked with insurance companies, they can't point to any kids that didn't have any pre-existing conditions that have died from COVID. More children die in car accidents on the way to and from school every year. Where is the rationality in fearing something that has such a miniscule chance of death? America once had a president that said, "The only thing we have to fear is fear itself." That's all this is. Fear brought on by the media, fear brought on by politicians. Now, I had COVID, my whole family did for that matter. That brings up another point, natural immunity. My kids have natural immunity, which is just as good as the vaccines that many of you have received. That makes the chances of COVID killing them less than the chances of getting hit by an asteroid. My worry about the psychological and physical problems from wearing masks all day is much more valid. Hypercapnia, which is too much carbon dioxide in the bloodstream, can cause anything from headaches and nausea, which I saw in my own kids, to brain damage. Now, how would you guys feel if a kid got brain damage because you forced them to wear a mask? We're seeing what the local school districts to do, are doing. Most of them are not forcing them to. And why? Because we're not a hotbed for COVID. Our hospitals aren't overflowing. We aren't running out of oxygen tanks. We're barely affected here. Let's give our children a lesson in critical thinking. Give these kids some sense of normalcy, I beg you. I'll close with this. Who are you really protecting? Is it the teachers? They've had the chance to be vaccinated if they want. Is it the children? I mean, we know that it barely affects them. Is it you, yourselves, your political beliefs? Like, who are you really protecting? Because I don't think this is based on what's really right for my children.
PJ, PJ, I'm sorry, but your time is up.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the beeper go.
That's fine. Thank you very much. Javana. Javana Tabor.
Everyone likes to quote politically-driven talking heads such as the CDC, the WHO, the NIH, or Dr. Fauci, who himself has co-authored a showing that, a paper showing that most deaths in the 1918 Spanish flu pandemic were caused by upper respiratory tract bacterial infections, which is exactly what long-term mask-wearing causes, which has been, which was by him stated at the beginning of this pandemic. What you do not, what do you, what do you say to states that never locked down, did not push for masks to be worn, but allowed their citizens to make the choice and wound up with lower COVID cases and deaths? Florida, for the most part, allowed their students to attend school five days a week without masks or lay it up to choice. They had, they had lower COVID rates than most states, such as California, which had the most restrictive measures in place. The fact of the matter is that this is hygiene theater. While countries like Sweden have banned the wearing of masks and citing, there is no scientific evidence that prevents COVID, that it prevents, wearing a mask prevents COVID. With that being said, my message is to the supporters of masks. You did not start wearing a mask because you studied available scientific data and medical evidence that determined a mask was the best or even effective choice or way of preventing COVID. You started wearing a mask because your stranger on television told you to. So unfortunately, many won't stop wearing a mask, no matter how much evidence comes out, which there has this past year. The fact that mask mandates were lifted and you still see people choosing to wear masks. These people are trauma-bonded at this point. For some, it's even a political decision, which was been touched upon. I can't be the only person that's heard that people that were wearing masks say, "I don't want to stop wearing a mask because I don't want people to think I'm Republican," or whatever their political ties are. The ritualistic sterilization of surfaces and wearing masks in the name of mass protection, self-preservation, or potent forms of mind control via group think. What you are witnessing today in your audience tonight is very angry, frustrated, protective parents that feel their backs are against the wall with their children directly behind them. My children are here tonight because this affects them. I don't like speaking in public because I don't like, I don't enjoy talking to people about stuff that I know is hitting brick walls. They don't want to hear it. But I am here for them because two weeks ago, when our daughter heard that she was going to have to wear masks again, this is my youngest, who was more affected by the wearing of masks. She had, she had headaches every day. She had anxiety, panic attacks. She's eight years old. That's not normal. She, they have since stopped since she's been out of school. We never wore masks after school. We didn't wear masks to go to stores. If they mandated it, we didn't go there. The fact that we had to, I feel like I didn't stand up for her last year and I forced her to go to school, knowing she was coming home every day with a headache, which I've touched on last week talking to you guys. This is a really, very real thing. Children are overlooked because their mental health is easily ignored.
Javana, thank you. I'm sorry, but your time is up. Deanna Gray.
Deanna Gray. Hello, my name's Deanna Gray. I too don't particularly like speaking in public, but I felt the need to get up and talk to each of you for the sake of my children. I emailed everyone on the board and Superintendent Vukovich a couple times now, talking about how I am against masking my children. And I am opposed to it. I believe parents have a right to choose what they believe is necessary for their children. I know I said in an email that when I had my first child, I was asking the nurse, you know, what she thought about something, and she looked at me and said, "You know what? You decide because you know your child best." And she was absolutely right. I do know my children best. We all know our children best. And if you would just make it optional, then people could make the best choice for their children. They could, if they want their child to wear a mask, wear a mask. If you want them to wear a mask and a face shield, by all means, go ahead. But if you don't want your child to wear a mask because, you know, we don't know what the repercussions of this are in the long run for children to be wearing these masks, and especially in these conditions. I mean, I'm sweating to death here. It is so unbelievably hot, and our kids spend the biggest part of their day here in this building. And in any of these buildings, they're not properly ventilated. Last week, there was smoke flowing in from someone who was burning something across the street. I mean, to send kids in masks and who knows what they are smelling in these masks day in and day out, and the food that gets stuck in there from after lunch. I mean, I have seen the masks, and they are disgusting, and you can't tell me that's healthy for my children. And I also want to say that my children are not responsible for my health. They are not responsible for your health or anyone's health in this room. We are each responsible for our own health and our own well-being. And everyone should make their best health choice. And if you think that's wearing a mask, then go ahead. And if you don't, then don't wear a mask. And that's how it should have been from the start. And it's unfortunate that it wasn't. I know that's not on you guys, that's on the government. But these are our bodies, these are my children, and I have to stand up for what I believe is the best thing for them. And I believe that is giving every person the choice to wear a mask or not. So please make masks optional when you vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Deanna. Is Brett, Brett Braun in, please?
My name is Brett Braun, and I too work for the hospital. I'm here in a personal capacity. Our two children are going to be going to East Pike and Horace Mann this fall. Like Dr. Neff, I too agree with his comment about managing by fact. Over the past year and a half, we've dealt with something that has never been in our lifetime, but it seems like it's changed every month almost, and we've been managing by fact, how we manage patients, what we do in our hospital. I remember the very beginning of the pandemic, we were actually talking about no masks because that was fearing people. Then we changed it real quick to having masks. I do believe in the science, as one of the parents mentioned over there. And I do think that's what we are doing at the hospital, is managing by fact. I have talked to a pediatrician, a family practice doctor, three surgeons, and a couple pulmonologists in the last two weeks. I was asking about the masking, and they don't agree with the masking. So all I'm asking for the board is to consider having alternative medical opinions. And like some people have mentioned here, this has become so politicized that people are fearful just to come up here because then we'll be ostracized by their peers that may have differing opinions. But at the end of the day, I do side with Dr. Neff to say, "Gosh, why can't we just manage by fact, take a wait-and-see-as-you-go policy and monitor it and manage it that way?" That's what we did at the hospital and the school boards and the school districts who you know are different. Thank you.
Okay, Brett, thank you very much. How about Chris Sadler?
Hello, my name is Chris Sadler. Uh, I didn't prepare a speech tonight, but, uh, I do have a few things I want to say. Um, I have two children, uh, in the school system. Uh, both of them this year were, were very, uh, you know, taken back by the masks. Uh, of course, nobody enjoys it. Um, we understand that, that, uh, it was something that was required. But, you know, I feel from that, you know, they were, they were a bit traumatized. And, and when I say that, um, you know, I have a six-year-old that didn't really want to return to school at all. She didn't want to wear a mask. My eight-year-old, she didn't want to wear a mask either. And neither of them are immune, uh, have immune issues or anything like that, which if, for instance, they would have, maybe, maybe we would have considered a mask. I just, I just think that, I think that masking should be a choice. Uh, it shouldn't be forced on our children. We don't know the long-term effects of it. Nobody does. We do know that masks are not 100% effective. And I think any, anybody in the medical field would agree with that. So, you know, I know that the board up here, standing here tonight, is, is obviously for the well, well-being of our children and the community. And so I understand you're in a tough position. But I, but I do think that, you know, masking should be optional. Um, if, if someone feels the need to mask because of their condition, they should be able to do that. And if someone feels the need not to due to a condition or, or the way they feel, then they should have that choice. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Thanks, Chris. Noah, Noah Hutton. Noah, for the board's, um, consideration, please tell us, um, your position in, in the high school government.
Hello, everyone. My name's Noah Hutton and I'm the senior class vice president. I'm here to represent my point of view for the student body. Uh, unfortunately, my friend, uh, Niall Bajwa, he's our senior class president. He came here a little late today, so he won't be able to say his piece. But, uh, his dad, dad's actually a chief, uh, palmano, I can never say it right, pulmonologist. He gave some great points about what to say. So hopefully we get to hear his point of view at some point. I'd also like to say that, uh, me and the fellow leaders of the senior class have not come to this meeting to incite or demonstrate any sort of disrespectful or hateful speech. We're just simply here to exert our frustrations with the board's sudden amendment of change, uh, with masks being, going from optional to required. At a time where COVID-19 was still being studied for how dangerous it truly was before vaccinations, I can understand it being a requirement for the, uh, safety of all people. But now in a time where vaccinations are out and, um, we know that COVID-19 is not deadly to people of my age, as 27 state health, uh, departments have come out and said that people my age, there's a 99% survival rate. Uh, a requirement of masks doesn't seem correct since there's a little, there's little risk for harm and it would be smart to let time move and react. Um, the, the move seems almost premature as we could wait, move, let the, uh, school year start and, uh, we could go from there if cases were to go up. Uh, though, uh, I, uh, am against masks for fully vaccinated people, I still encourage everyone in the student body to, uh, receive the vaccine for the benefit of all. Uh, I, in my opinion, believe that the student body should not be punished for going out and doing the right thing. Everyone was told that if they go get this vaccine, that, um, they would be rewarded. And it seems nothing towards rewarding has happened. Uh, I'd like to, uh, I'd like all members to think of, uh, the senior class as they make any sort of decisions, um, and realize that this could be another case of a graduating year having their senior year completely flustered. Uh, thank you for your time.
Okay, Noah, thank you. Brock Petrus. Brock Petrus.
Hello, my name is Brock Petrus and I'm the senior class treasurer at the high school. I'm speaking as a student. I'd like to start by saying, completely understand the main goal of these policies are to keep the student faculty safe, but requiring masks to all students who have been vaccinated is not necessary. I can understand that the Delta variant is now a thing, but it has not affected our community yet. And until then, I feel along with multiple other students that we should follow the original health and safety plan to make masks optional for the senior, for senior high school. All students and faculty in the senior high school have the option to be vaccinated and the new health safety plan will be discouraging any further students from becoming vaccinated. Personally speaking, as someone who is fully vaccinated, I feel as if I should not be required to wear a mask. If the entire University of IUP is not mask optional, why should the high school in the same time be required to wear a mask? Not only are masks very uncomfortable and possible to always stay above your nose, but they also make it harder to learn. Throughout the school year last year, there were many, there were multiple occurrences when I was unable to hear teachers and teachers were unable to hear me, which results in it making it severely harder to learn. With masks, with masks, the problem, this problem may, will always be around. Even today, there have been multiple instances where we were unable to understand this, what speakers were saying due to them wearing a mask. It comes down to what was more important, getting an education or wearing a mask. I agree with how school has been handled the past two years when the vaccine was not an option. But now that people are in high, now that the people in the high school are all able to get vaccinated, we should not be irate from another senior year. In closing, I would like to say that I, along with many others who attend Indiana Area Senior High School, believe that it should be up to the students to be safe, be smart, and get vaccinated so we are able to have a normal mask optional school year. Thank you.
Thank, thank you, Brock. I, I'm looking for Drianna Vancis.
Hi, my name's Dreama Van Seis and I live in the borough. I'm a registered nurse and, um, in the last, like, four-plus years, I've been teaching nursing students and, um, man, oh, man, it's tough to teach during a pandemic. And I'm thinking about teachers who may be faced with having to do some kind of a split between in-school and children who are at home with COVID. I'm, I'm so grateful that the numbers of children who die from COVID are statistically low. Of course, one is too many, but statistically low. But the number who get sick and may be sick for an extended period of time is, was not accounted for. And when we, when those children miss school, they miss that opportunity for being together and learning together and learning in the classroom. And as good as Zoom is, it's nothing like the opportunity a teacher has of evaluating a student in the classroom. Like the, the student said, um, the Delta variant isn't here yet. We are also very lucky for that. Pennsylvania has a chance to get our act together. The states where it's high right now, where hospitalization with COVID is high, are those that are really hot in the summer. And so socializing happens inside. This is inside, but generally we're socializing outside. Even church is held outside in Pennsylvania this time of year. So our numbers aren't as high, but they will be there because our vaccination rate is that low. The CDC in, in May said, you know, school without masking is the recommendation. That changes all the time. Heaven help us. In a good way, the Veterans Affairs said VA healthcare workers have to be vaccinated now. This is the most dynamic and changing event in our nation. So hang in there, teaching our children patience. If you need to wear a mask because the numbers are high, yes, wear the mask. But there may be days when the number is very low based on our sewer system or based on just the numbers of hospitalized, that, you know, maybe we won't have to mask and still be safely together. But I think, you know, saying from the get, I'm not going to let, have my child be masked. That, I think is, you know, we make decisions every day to protect our children. We put a helmet on their head if they're less than 12 and they ride a bike. They teach us and remind us to wear a seatbelt. I bet you've all been in that, in that situation. Buckle up, mom, buckle up, dad. This is a way we could teach them, right, the science, the safety. But because we've been vaccinated, we can relax that. I would encourage everyone to get the vaccine. Thank you for your time.
Thank, thank you, Drianna. That can, that concludes our, our public comment, uh, for this evening. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, sir. Uh, sir, sir, uh, uh, sir, 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 please. Thank you, sir. Okay, we're down to superintendent's report. Uh, Mike, is there anything you'd like to say at this point?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to echo your comments earlier. We appreciate everyone coming, express their opinion and their thoughts and their perspectives on the matter, uh, as this has become a very difficult subject. And we just appreciate everyone's grace and compassion in allowing the board to work through exactly what decision we want to make. So thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, and I don't believe Mr. Ray Pack is with us this evening, so there's no solicitor's report. Uh, may I have a motion to, uh, accept the minutes in the agenda, please?
Second.
Okay, moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Okay, there are no board reports tonight. Tom, we're down to extracurricular and academic committee.
Um, I believe we had a meeting on July 19th. We discussed the health and safety plan and possible motions on that. Uh, we discussed the strategy solutions proposal and discussed that. Um, the committee have moved that to the board for approval. We talked about staffing updates, um, with the, uh, physical education retirement. Uh, we discussed, uh, extensively dual enrollment opportunities and updates. We, uh, talked about the data warehousing reporting and made a recommendation to move that forward. Uh, we talked about, um, uh, using the, um, ESRS money to, um, to buy some consumable materials for the future. And we discussed, um, statistics curriculum up, no. I don't, I, I think we delayed the statistics curriculum update. And we had some discussion again about the, um, the dual enrollment. That's the report, sir.
Okay, Tom.
The, um, I'd like to make a motion for the 2021, 2022 Health and Safety Plan, that the board approves a modified health and safety plan as attached with all updates included to make masking optional for all students and staff except for transportation as mandated by the federal government. The H and S plan will be updated and modified as levels increase or decrease and/or the Department of Health or Pennsylvania Department of Education updates our guidelines and mandates.
Okay, it's been moved in second. We have questions, comments, or discussions on this motion, please. Terry, you just grabbed the mic. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just say that, you know, we had a lot of good discussion a week ago. I think all the board members were here and each of them provided comments and stuff. And, and I guess I'll reiterate my comments from last week are, we learned a lot over the past 16 months about COVID and, and how to deal with it. And Jared, since Chaney's not here, we, we are going to clean the schools and we learned how to do it. And, you know, uh, there's processes in place that the janitors have and they follow it. And someone checks on that. Uh, we've also increased the ventilation in the buildings where we could. We've, I think, shortened the, the time between changing our filters in the ventilation systems. We learned how to social distance the best we could. We learned how to do cafeterias. So.
Put some special filters in the nursing stations.
Right, right. So I just wanted to reiterate that tonight.
Thank you, Terry. Any other comments? Go ahead, Tamara.
Um, first of all, I'm, I want to thank all the parents for coming out. I started, um, getting involved with the school board when I had a, a concern that brought me to these meetings. So I think that's great. Um, and I think that, um, for me, my decision is not made out of fear of death or fear of, um, of illness, but there are many, many factors that go into this. Um, and we, I have also sought opinions of medical doctors. So I'm not going to be popular tonight. I'm not going to vote for this. Um, but I do want to say that, um, I would support it. I do believe in choice. But I also think that the parents who choose, um, to follow a different path, the, the masking perspective and vaccine perspective need a safe place for their students. Um, current, um, CDC guidelines insinuate that there is an exemption to close contact if masks are worn. So that would potentially keep masked children from being quarantined. Um, we also have gotten letters from people today, the, um, we got an email from a parent who is undergoing chemo and she has a child who can't, um, be vaccinated yet. So to provide safe classrooms for those. So what I am proposing is that we consider doing a parent survey to look if, if there are enough parents who would want their child in a masked classroom and give them the opportunity to. Or allow the classrooms to have half that is masked and half that is not. Um, in the event that masks do protect or do not protect, those people get to choose their route of protection and their level of protection. So, um, let me see, what else? And I do think we've learned a lot over the past 16 months. I think if we, um, think about what science is, science is changing. Science is something that we learn from because it evolves. So I, I think we're, um, um, we're learning as we go. And, um, I'm learning every day. But I also feel that I have a responsibility to, um, provide a safe environment for those who choose masks. So we need to have a option for both.
Thank you, Tamara. Jared, you had, you had the microphone there. Did you, were you going to add something there before? Oh, okay, um, anybody else? Tammy, go ahead, please.
I have two teenagers in this, in, in our district right now and my husband. Um, you heard one of the teenagers and my husband this evening. Um, and we don't necessarily agree on everything. I do agree on the masking, but I know that that's the minority at the moment. Um, my kids have issues. They have blood pressure issues, they have breathing issues. They had, when they wore the mask, they had the anxiety and the depression. They went from high honors to barely scraping by and getting to become a senior. And I'm afraid, yes, I'm afraid of them, but it's not a political decision. I mean, I went and grew up in a town called Oakland, Iowa. 500 people. Their nursing home, the only nursing home they have in the town, had 30 residents. 10 of them died from COVID. And I knew all of those people. I grew up with them. I went to their houses on trick or treat, to trick or treat with. It is not fear mongering when the kids can transfer to adults. You don't know. And kids don't wash their hands. Parents, kids come home with illnesses all the time from school and you can't say they don't because you know when puceys and heads, because the parents are out of it. But we're going to make masks optional. And I think that's a good idea, a great compromise. If it gets bad, then we have to mask up. But right now, we have the option.
Thank you, Tammy. Uh, anybody else? Brock, go ahead.
So I'm not going to argue any science with any of you guys. Interestingly enough, 10% of scientists still believe climate change is not Interestingly enough, 10% of scientists still believe climate change is not real. So, I'm not going to argue the science, but tonight I'm going to tell you how, if you remember back in the spring, parents came here and they said, "We want our children in school. We want them in school five days a week." They were angry that we couldn't have them in five days when we could only do four. We had sent out a parent survey. The survey said, "We want our kids back in school." So, the question we have to ask is, how do we get our kids in school and keep them there? So, how do we keep from going remote? We know if we have two to four cases in a school building, the Department of Health will come in and shut us down. That shutdown I heard from parents here tonight really hurt our kids. So, we have to put measures in place, layers of protection, as the CDC recommends, to make sure our buildings are open. We did this all last year, and we were able to show by doing our layers of protection, including masking, our buildings could stay open, that the spread came from outside the community. Even when the outside community zone was hot, it wasn't hot inside our schools. So, I agree with one of the speakers tonight who said, "We need to go base off the facts in the community, and we need to learn, look at the metrics." And so, COVID is here to stay, unfortunately. We're going to be dealing with this problem for years, and we need to build metrics. What are the correct metrics of when we need to take more layers of protection just than the simple ones? Is it how many cases in the community? How many hospitalizations? One of our metrics is we have a very large transient population coming into town in a few weeks. Their leases start August 1st. A lot of them will be here by the end of the month. They are going to contribute to the spread. Remember, try not to go outside your community. Well, thousands upon thousands of people are going to come into our community. That is an outside metric that we need to look at. So, if it wasn't for that metric, my vote might be different tonight, looking at the facts of low cases, low hospitalizations, although we still have very low vaccinations in our county. And I agree, if, if you're vaccinated, you should have a right to go to school and not wear a mask. And maybe that could get some of our vaccination levels up in our high school. I believe the countywide statistic of 15 to 18-year-olds vaccinated is about 16 to 17%. That's very, very low, and thank you for those who did get vaccinated. So, I do not support updating this health and safety plan because we know we have a metric coming in that is going to cause a spike of COVID here. Delta will be here, and we need to make sure our schools stay open. Remember, that's what the parents went in the survey. The schools open five days a week. So, if we don't do anything and we don't have multiple layers of protection, we will be shut down. And those parents that need to go to work, you know, get back to work, will have to be home with their children, because who's going to watch them? So, I can't support this as is because we know when we open up that we're going to end up with problems. And I hope that in the future, we don't, that we can manage with using the facts of the community and manage how the, the metrics of whether we need to add layers or take away layers. That is all.
Okay, thank you, Barb. Anybody else? I think Cindy.
So, this is going to sound strange, but I agree with everything that's been said here tonight. Everybody. Tamara is right. It would be wonderful if we could have split classrooms so we could do masking, no masking. People are correct. They're, they're your children. You see them when you, when they come home. I also know that you want them to be safe. I also know that the statistics for children dying are low, but that statistic becomes frighteningly real if it's your child, or if it was your grandma, or if it was your dad, or your family member. As a board member, last year I was very, very pleased that we could roll with the punches. And I said multiple times last year, "We need to be prepared for anything. We need to know that things are going to change. We need to do what needs to be done." I'm still of that opinion. We know that things are going to change. Barbara's right. IUP kids are going to come back. Our community numbers are going to change. Is it going to go into the high school, into the elementary school? Possibly. Is there a way that we can be safe? We know ways to be safe. We did it last year. Do we have to do it right this minute? You don't want masks right this minute? So, no, but please know that it's a fluid situation. Things will change, and there may come a day when the school gets shut down because of too many cases. And at that point, then, then what do we do? It's going to have to go back to stronger safety precautions, and masks are one of them. So, for right this minute, I'm going to vote to make it optional. But please, understand, this needs to be flexible, and if the numbers start going up in the hospitals, the numbers start going up in our buildings, something is going to have to change. And short of what we have now, we don't have the option to, to allow students to optionally go completely remote with synchronous learning. That is something that's going to have to come down from the state. If we could offer that, it would take away a lot of this contentious issue right now. But please, know that we are trying our best to keep your kids safe. We're trying our best to keep them in school. We're trying our best to get them educated, and we're trying our best to walk a very, very difficult line. So, we appreciate your indulgence.
Thank you, Cindy. Julia, oh, I'm sorry, Uta, go ahead.
I was going to say almost exactly what Cindy just stated, and I think we can use our local statistics. Things have, things are changing so rapidly. Between this time last week and today, there's more information, different information, additional recommendations, new guidelines, new news about the Delta variant and where it is and where it's not, new projections as to what the impact could be, and I'm comfortable with how we demonstrated last year that, as Cindy put it, we could roll with the punches and we could make decisions quickly and communicate that in a very succinct and effective way. And I think we just need to be prepared that if the time comes that our rates in our school community necessitate it, this plan is going to change. And it's all in trying to keep kids in school and keep our community safe.
Thanks, Uta. Julia, go ahead.
I voted for masks to be optional two weeks ago, and tonight I'm going to support this change to the plan, which would make, which would allow masks to be optional. Two weeks ago, I felt it was premature to require masking for everybody all the time. I still feel it's premature, but I agree with the fluidity of this. We can't predict the future with any real accuracy. We could all be here, we could all walk out tonight and be gone. It's just the way life is. So, it's tough to predict, but we're going to be very vigilant under this new plan. I think it's a better plan, and it could happen that we have to go back to a full mask mandate. That's the way it is, and we have to learn how to get along about it and support one another. And let's just hope, you know, that the variant doesn't hit our county with a real lethal force. I hope it doesn't, but, you know, you never know. I don't think anybody in Germany last week or in the middle of China expected their cities to flood in a matter of hours. That's how fast the world can change. A lot of people died. A lot of people died in car accidents. So, you never know, so we have to be vigilant, and I have full confidence in this district's ability to, to be very watchful. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. I do want to, I'm sorry, go ahead, Tom. I'm sorry I missed you.
I've been real subtle over here. Echoing what Cindy and Uta have said, and they have spent an enormous amount of time on the health and safety plan, is that right now, we're kind of okay. We don't have any kids in school. We're, the infection rates are low. The difference between fall of '21 and fall of '20 is that we do have vaccination. We do have a substantial portion of a population that has gotten sick. Is it not working? No, it is. It was on. Probably wasn't holding it properly. So, fall of '21 is going to be different. We don't know how. My goal, my personal goal is to keep your kids in school. Masks are the simplest thing. They're the simplest thing to do. However, cohorts and social distancing and extra classrooms and staggering class start times, those are all things that we may end up doing this year, and I want to make that clear. This is not a final decision, that you'll be back in this room in three months when we're looking at, at quarantines that are shutting the high school down or not, and we don't know that yet. So, be aware that, that, that the healthier the community is and the more time our kids spend in school, in the buildings, being taught by real teachers, that's my goal here. Okay? But if we have to shut down and we have to go back to synchronous learning and asynchronous learning and cohorts and everything that we did in fall of 2020, we will do that in a heartbeat. The masks are the least important protection. Absolutely. Okay? And the easiest thing for us to do, but everything else that we did in the fall of 2020, we would put back on the table. So, be aware of that, that this is not a final decision. Okay? It depends on the community being healthy, and it depends on you keeping your kids in school. Thank you.
Okay, no, it's my turn. First of all, in the motion here tonight, we talk about transportation, which is mandated by the federal government. Josh, just as a quick note of correction, earlier today, it was, on your radio station, it was the state mandate, but I believe it is really the federal mandate here. Okay, thank you. Okay, so how many people here have flown on a commercial airline or intend to? Okay, did you have to wear a mask when you flew on that commercial airline? Okay, yeah, you do, because the CDC says if you're not getting on that airplane. Unfortunately, what we're talking about here tonight is actually when your kids hit the classroom. I want to be very clear about that. The CDC is mandating it for anybody in public transportation, which means whether you're getting on an airliner, or you're riding the Indigo bus, or you're on the school bus, they mandated that as, but that, the point I'm trying to make is, it's not coming from this board. Believe me, I would rather have that decision made here. If, either they make all the decisions for us, or we make all the decisions, it makes it even worse when, when we've got to do some of what they say, and then they don't tell us what to do and the rest of it. Okay? So, I want to be very clear on that. Your, your children still may be asked to, to wear a mask based on that CDC, that CDC mandate. Okay? I want to talk about health in general, and I want to take away the concept of COVID. I made these comments last week, and I want to reiterate them again this, this week. If 20% of our students came down with the flu or the cold, and 20% of our staff came down with that same flu or cold, we would have to shut down that building, and it's been statistically, or there's been historical evidence where districts have actually had to do that, because if you have 20% of the staff out, you can't operate. Anybody that works in a business, there's a sweet spot in the number of people that you have in your employee, and that determines whether or not you can open your doors that day. The point is that, that it doesn't really matter whether it's COVID, or whether it's the flu, or whether it's a cold. If the infection rate is so high, as, as Tom and some of the other folks have said, it does mean that we may have to make some changes. Now, I know that Mike, Mike's not here tonight, and, and although he's here with us online, he had some personal issues he had to take care of today, but I, I will say that he is working on what those actual metrics will look like, some of these other mitigation things that we can do that Tom mentioned, okay? And, and we'll be unveiling those probably at the next, at the next board meeting, if not at, if not sooner than any of our committee meetings. So, there's still some more work to be done on if we are going to make it optional, at what point in time do we have to look at it from a different perspective? But that's work that the administration is, is, has got to do. Okay, one last call. Are there any other comments from the board members at this point? Okay, nothing heard? Jared, would you go ahead with the roll call, please?
Barb Barker? Tammy Blank?
Yes.
Cindy Brode?
Yes.
Julia Tamarkey-Cucuro?
Yes.
Tom Harley?
Yes.
Mr. Kerr?
Yes.
Mrs. Leeper?
No.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Mr. Schroth?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to two.
Okay, thank you, everyone, both the audience and the board. I really do appreciate the way this meeting was conducted. Thank you, sir. I'm sorry, what? Have some policy and personnel items.
We do. I do not have a committee report. Our next meeting is August the 9th at 5:30 PM. I'm going to do 6.2, that the board accepts with regret the letter of resignation from Jody Lewandowski, Senior High Health and Physical Education Teacher, due to retirement effective September 14, 2021, and authorizes the administration to fill with a long-term substitute teacher.
Okay, moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussion?
I'd like to thank Mrs. Lewandowski for her long-term service to the, to the district.
Yes, sir, that's correct. Anybody else?
I'd mentioned at the committee meeting about if there was a chance to, uh, limit the term to the long-term substitute so that we, we could use maybe multiple ones throughout the year, if that's, if there's an advantage to that. Jared, you're shaking your head saying, no, we can't.
I would just warn against that. The district years ago settled a pretty hefty lawsuit overdoing just that.
Okay. All right. Sorry.
He withdraws his question. All right, any, any other?
From the sake of, uh, the sake of this, how long has this been in the department?
I believe she's pretty much been here for 35 years, her entire career.
Okay. Thanks, Josh. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Next.
That based on the recommendation of administration Alyssa Millen, A-L-Y-S-S-A, last name Millen, M-I-L-L-E-N, be employed as an elementary art teacher effective August 23, 2021, in accordance with their certification and an annual salary of $55,273, Step 1, Instructional 1, pending receipt of updated clearances and clear Act 168 forms.
Okay, questions, comments, discussion on this?
Can I just correct the side? It's 55,237.
Oh, I'm sorry. I wrote it down incorrectly.
And the steps are correct, Jared?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions, comments, discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, next one.
That the board employs Hannah Schreckengost and Jaisa Wolf as summer learning camp tutors at $30 per hour be approved.
Jared, can you, or Mike, can you comment on the need for these, these two folks?
Absolutely, sir. Our second session has larger numbers and we're, with less staff. Uh, as you know, we discussed previously with the board that we need to come back and bring people qualified kids forward at our later time. And this is reflective of that promise and that discussion we had previously. These two young ladies stood out to us. We think they could be valuable to us and today was the first day camp and we're off to a, a good start.
Okay, thanks, Mike. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Terry, looks like it's your turn.
Okay, the committee meeting report, Mr. Harley did the summary for the, that's fine. You did the summary for the joint meeting. And then I'll read 7.2 motion, strategy solutions proposal, that the board approves revised proposal from strategy solutions as submitted.
Okay. Moved in second. Questions, comments, or discussions on this? Okay, I'll just reiterate that, um, the, the purpose of hiring this particular organization is, is to help guide us through, um, the grade, our discussions on grade reconfiguration. Any further comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That was no on Barb?
Yeah, this is the same reasons I said the last time we voted on this for the board meeting.
Okay, so a motion carries eight to one. Okay, Audit and Finance, Julia?
We did not have a meeting tonight and we will have a meeting, um, the second board meeting in August, correct, Jared? No.
Yes, ma'am. In August, I don't have that date in front of me, but the second meeting, fourth Monday of the month.
Okay, that brings us down to the closing. There are no discussion items. Do we have some public comment in the chat room, Jared?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, we had some, I don't think we had any enclosures this time, but we did have an executive session on Thursday, July 15th at 4:30 to discuss safety concerns and other executive session, um, before this meeting, uh, for personnel, personnel issues. Our next board meeting will be August the 9th at 7:00 PM for general purposes. I'm not sure, uh, Mike, are we still scheduled for that academic meeting on August the 2nd?
That's something I have to review tomorrow, sir. And if we, if we, anything changes, we'll be sure to notify it on the website, sir.
I'm, I'm sorry, you're a little hard to understand, Mike.
That's something we have to review tomorrow. And if anything changes, we'll make a note on the website so people are aware.
Okay, so for right now, there is an academic meeting scheduled for August 2nd, subject to change. Policy and personnel on August the 9th may have a motion to adjourn. Second? All those in favor? Meeting's adjourned.